Meeting of the school board is called to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seaberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul. Mr. Igbal.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we added under discussion agenda, finance and operations, FY 23 budget update.
Great, and for committee reports, Mrs. Stevens, do you have a policy committee report?
I do, but I'm going to share it during discussion.
Very good, thank you. And citizens' comments, do we have anyone signed up for citizens' comments? No, she doesn't. She changed her mind. Is there anybody that'd like to speak at all? Next up would be our public hearing, which is also open to all citizens. Anybody would like to speak to the public hearing about the proposed 22, 23, five-year strategic plan? Okay, we'll move along then. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Chair, I'd like to make the motion that the school board of the City of Manassas enter closed. Nope, wrong one. Sorry. My apologies. I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. First up on our discussion agenda is policies. Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you.
Chair Stevens.
On June 21st, we had a policy committee meeting. It was the second one of this calendar year, the third one since the start of the 22, excuse me, 21, 22 school year. We have policy updates as we receive policy updates from the V S B A. We need to incorporate them into our policies. At the meeting, we looked at 43 different policies that we received updates on. There were 11 updates to support services, instructions, students, school communication, school and community relations. Six were in relation to Virginia Code legislation that was updated. Four had legal references updated. One policy was updated with language change from passive to active verb tense. Support services had four policies updated with minor updates to reflect changes related to legislation. Instruction had eight minor updates related to Virginia Code changes. One modified policy was updated. One policy that we have, that we had modified, was updated to be in line with the V S B A. All that was done was, the policy originally had language related to half-day kindergarten. We've not offered a half-day kindergarten, that's why our policy had originally been modified. Six policies were updated as related to students. Policy J E D dash M allows five total days per academic year for students to participate in 4-H activities. Two policies were updated to add the term guardian along with parent, so that it's not just parent, but it's parent and guardian who can access what the policy specified. Community and school relations, four policies were updated. Fiscal management, one policy was reviewed but not revised. Foundations and basic commitments, one policy was updated with legal references. School board governance and operations, six policies had cross-references and legal references updated. General school administration had two policies, one modified to include superintendent's designee as who incidents involving substance abuse or violence, who to report to if the superintendent was not available. And personnel had one policy that was reviewed but not revised. And that is the full of the policy committee meeting.
And will these come before us in a future meeting?
Yes, these will come before us in a future meeting, I believe, under the consent agenda. And all of the policies can be found in board docs and they can be searched under policies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second item on discussion agenda tonight is finance and operations. Mr. Randy Hawkins with an update on our 23 budget.
Good evening. Can you hear me? The following is an update concerning the FY 22, 23 school board budget. As we all know, this has been a very long budget process. The Manassas City School Board adopted its budget as required by state law on March 22nd. Seems like a long time ago now. On June 17th, the General Assembly and the Governor came together to produce the FY 23, 24 biennial budget, state budget. The next slide will describe what effect this budget had on the school board's March 22nd adopted budget. I can't get it to move. There it goes. The state adopted budget reduced funding to M C P S by approximately $1.7 million. There were significant reductions in several key areas of importance to M C P S and its students. Reductions to funding in English as a second language, early reading intervention, funding for at-risk students, and school construction funding. In the original General Assembly adopted budget and in the M C P S school board adopted budget, $3.1 million was allocated for school construction projects, which the school board approved for the allocation to be assigned to the pre-fund the upcoming Dean School project. The final amount allocated through the adopted state budget reduced this funding by $678,000. Therefore, the Dean School pre-funding is proposed to be at $2.8 million. Another change was the requirement to fund a $1,000 bonus for all SOQ-funded positions. While the state did provide 60% of the funding for this bonus, this action created an additional cost to the school board of $534,540. The total deficit on the March 22nd adopted school budget is $1.5 million. To address this deficit as required by state law, we are proposing the elimination of eight vacant teaching positions, the transfer of funding for five math support teachers to the Title I federal grant, eliminate the budget request for two technology specialists, and one application engineer, and a reduction in the amount that was requested in the budget for legal fees. While all reductions affect the quality of instruction to our students, we feel that these reductions are a good compromise. The following five slides documents the many positive changes that are included in the FY 23 budget that we feel will enhance the educational experience for our students. So just as a reminder, included in FY 23 budget, we are honoring 95% of all the requests from the principals, directors throughout the division for material supplies, purchase services, professional development, all to meet the students' needs. We have balanced all the teacher allocations in each school to coincide with the enrollment and student instructional needs. One of the big things in this budget for us is to be able to have two elementary gifted resource teachers, one at Dean and one at Round. And another good one is that we added an evening school program for Osborne High School students who are struggling to reach on-time graduation due to family, academic, and financial hardships. Next slide discusses the repurposing of one and adds two math support teachers at the intermediate schools, repurposes one and adds one math support teacher at Metz Middle School, repurposed 10 positions to provide five reading support teachers and five math support teachers at all elementary schools that will be funded through Title I funding, and repurposed two and added three reading support teachers through the American Rescue Plan Act funding at the intermediate, middle, and the high school levels. And we created another counseling position at Metz. This budget also, under strategic plan goal number two, provides a cost of living and step increase for all staff totaling 5%. Provides a $1,000 bonus, one-time bonus for all staff, and adds two professional growth specialists. Another big change for Manassas City Public Schools is that we will be hiring family liaisons at all schools to help bring our community to our schools and to support our students and their families to have an easy transition or easier transition into Manassas City and into the school division. CTE work-based learning specialists and CTE coordinators, pre-case specialists, social workers, attendance officer, and a special education coordinator of transition. Finally, under goal number four, this budget provides $2.8 million in state school construction grant funding for the Dean School project, which is very important for us. That project will be coming up for us in future board meetings. We'll need to discuss that building, how big the building, what type of building. We'll have to discuss all of those items. But we, with this money, will have sufficient funding in the Dean School project to begin as planned on July the 1st, 2025. English language arts coordinator, math coordinator, ESOL specialist for grade 7 through 12, and adds a procurement buyer to my department. So the screen, what's on the screen now shows a breakdown of where all the funding is. It's a pie chart of where the funding is allocated. 87% of all of our budget is spent on personnel and benefits, which is not atypical for a school division. That's very typical, but I want you to see that almost nine out of every $10 that the school board gets goes to employee salary and benefit cost. The next slide shows a breakdown of how the budget is allocated. Almost 78% of all of the budget is budgeted directly to the schools. But all of this other funding that we have for information technology, student achievement, transportation, facility maintenance, they're all back to support the students and the functioning of this school division. But almost 78% of it in total is going to, is budgeted directly at the school. One of the things I want to point out to you on here as well, you'll see under human resources, we put the one-time bonus money there. Instead of splitting it up throughout a million different places throughout the budget, we have put it all in one place so that it will be easier for us to account for and to disperse. But it's showing up under the human resources section. You'll see $1,323,649. So, Alba, can you pull up the summary of all funds? All school funds? So on the screen, I know most of us can't see it, but school board members can see it, is a detailed breakdown of how the money is allocated throughout all funds, from the school operating fund to the federal grant fund, food service fund, debt service, and school capital projects. Couple of things I want to point out to you. Under the school debt service fund, you'll see $2.8 million, 2805613. That funding is the state construction money that we're allocating directly to the Dean School project. The school capital projects fund of $3 million is typical for Manassas City. All the other funding for its food service and others, we have discussed at length. Can you pull up the five-year forecast, please, Alba? So on the screen now, you have the five-year forecast. We're looking at FY 23 through 27. The state revenue is increasing at a 2% increase allocation throughout all of the years, and the city is at a 3% increase for all out years. We do not have a funding agreement with the city. We are just going back based on past experience, and these are projections. The actual numbers, the 23 numbers are actual numbers that we have been given by either the state or the city. The school operating fund expenditures for FY 24, you see 127,408. Well, that's a 5% increase from '23. So why are we going up 5%? Well, the reason we're going up 5% is because the, in the biennial budget from the state, there's another 5% increase for staff salaries for FY 24. So we've moved our expenses up 5% for FY 24 and back down to 3% for '25, '26, and '27. You can see our debt service, our capital improvement fund, energy performance contract, all of those items at the bottom of the page. Can you pull up the C I P, Alba? So the capital improvement fund for FY 23, we're showing a normal $3 million allocation. One of the biggest expenses of this, on this capital improvement fund, is to provide part of the fire, to begin replacing the fire alarm system at Metz, that we think that that's going to be a million-dollar project that we need to do next year. So some of the funding is in FY 23, the rest of it is in FY 24. And also, it's going to cost a lot of money for us to put field lights, poles, scoreboard, bleachers and stuff over at Metz for the football field. That is the major expenditures for that. We're going to begin the roof replacement design at Osborne. That we're going to have to take in pieces over the next several summers with such a large roof and with such limited time to get it done. We'll take that out in at least three different stages, three different summers to get it completed. And lastly, can you pull up the building, the fee sheet, Alba? The building fee sheet? There are really no changes as far as the rental cost. The cost for the fees for the students, primarily all of them are zero, except for, you know, student parking permits, driver's education, some optional things that the students would take. We've had, we've reduced these fees significantly over the last several years, and so we have relatively few fees. If we move further over, we'll be able to go to the lunch prices. Alba, can you move to the lunch price slide on page 6? Again, for FY 22, 23 school year, we will not be charging students for breakfast, lunch, or dinner for that matter. I don't think dinner is shown on this sheet, but we do have a dinner program at Osborne that operates every day. So, but we will not be charging any cost to students for meals, any meal provided by M C P S throughout their day. There's been no change in the adult prices as well from what they were in the current year. There have been no changes in the cost for rental of the buildings that we have throughout from FY 22. They're consistent from the current year. So I know this is a lot of information, but we will be bringing it back to you on July the 12th at our next school board meeting for approval at that time. I think this is the first time in my career that we've not had a budget adopted by July the 1st, but this is the best we could do with the situation that the General Assembly, the Governor, left us in by not approving their budget until so late. So we, tonight is the first reading, and then we'll be back on July the 12th for school board approval. Are there any questions, concerns, comments this time?
Anyone? Go ahead.
Just a couple of quick questions. If you go to the first slideshow, which I think was the FY 22, 23 school year, school board revised budget, if we go to page, to slide 2, the $1,000 bonus to staff, that includes all M C P S employees?
Yes.
Okay. And only 60% of that is paid through the General Assembly's budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We, they, the state typically only funds SOQ positions or standards of quality positions. We, all school divisions, and certainly M C P S, don't believe or don't operate that way. We cannot have two math teachers teaching side by side, one of them be considered a SOQ-funded position and the other one not. One get a $1,000 bonus and the other one get zero. So they gave us 60% of the money, but like I said in the presentation, that left us a whole, a deficit that Manassas City had to provide of over a half a million dollars that we were not expecting. That was never proposed during the General Assembly. It certainly wasn't adopted by the General Assembly, but when they came back and made a compromise with the Governor, not only was it a 5% salary increase, but a $1,000 bonus. That's on top of, the 5% is also for, only for SOQ-funded positions as well. So that's even more money that the school board had in the locality had to allocate toward funding.
When should staff expect that bonus in their paychecks? Has that been determined yet?
No, the General Assembly gave us guidelines that it had to be done before December the 1st. So between now and December the 1st.
Okay, thank you. And another question, you, throughout the budget, throughout that first slideshow, the term repurposed positions was used. Can you explain what that means?
So everybody knows what a new position is. We created a new one that we never had before. Repurposed means that we had, we may have had a teacher that was, I don't know, pick one. Maybe she was a science teacher that we decided, well, we would be better use for this teacher position to be a math or a science or a reading teacher or something like that. And so that's when we call, that's the term repurposed. It's not what it is right now, and it will, their function, their duties will change. It's still a teaching position, but not in what they had been before.
So essentially, it's based on school and school division need? So you would not repurpose a teacher who, let's say, was still needed in that subject area?
Absolutely not. These are teachers that are, due to Mr. Gaffeler, Dr. Newman's research, they have determined to meet our current student needs, that we need these additional supports to help those students. So they are changing the purpose or the direction to move the school division forward instructionally.
What is, so when, I'm trying to think this through. When a position is repurposed, you're essentially getting rid of one position, creating a new position, and offering that teacher that new position, or are you opening that new position up to anyone?
So it all depends on her or his teacher's qualifications. But I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we're having, that we're losing any of our current teacher and staff. We, Manassas City, like all school divisions in the state, are in search of teachers every day. There's a teacher shortage in Virginia. So if they were, if, let's assume we were changing the teaching position from one to the other, I'm sure we have another position available somewhere in the division for that teacher. So we're not, I don't want anybody to leave here tonight thinking that we are riffing any teacher or eliminating any current employee against their will.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question. What is a procurement buyer?
Procurement buyer helps with, you know, helps the chief procurement officer do, they help with solicitations for when we have to go out for bid. There are numerous extensive procedures that we have to go through to ensure that the playing field is even equitable for all of our vendors. They also help us keep our vendors in compliance with the contracts that we have written. And we, there is a lot of them in, so every time that we have a procurement over $5,000, the procurement officer has to get involved. We've had one person for all of these years, from buying textbooks to buying school buses to buying, you know, renovating the restroom or the turf field over at Osborne. They are, have an extensive amount of work to do, and this buyer will help the chief procurement officer to be able to keep the school division moving forward in a compliant manner. A lot of times, we've had this happen in the past where projects were slowed down or we weren't able to buy textbooks or buy certain things as quickly as we wanted to because we didn't have the staff available to be able to move these projects along. So the buyer will be helping with the procurement officer to make sure that these procurements are done in a, as fast as possible to meet the needs of our students.
Okay, thank you. That was all my questions, thank you. Anyone else?
Mrs. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I'm just curious, how often we review our building rental commercial fees?
Well, these rates were set by the school board several years ago. We seem to not have a problem renting these buildings out from people willing to pay. We are striking a balance between covering our costs. We are not in this for making money, but we're also there to help serve our community. So we do, we haven't looked at them, these rates have been set for several years. The only rates that we really look at annually is the fees that we charge for, like custodial fees or administrative fees, somebody who has to be there to open the building or close the building. But we're just looking at to make sure that the school division doesn't lose money as breaking even on the project. So, for example, one of the things that we did this year was look at the average custodial salary throughout the division. What is that average hourly rate? And that's what we put here, where we were verifying that we had to correct rate here so that we wouldn't. I don't want the school board to lose money on a rental from a private citizen or somebody from the community. We're just trying to, we're just trying to break even.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Chair. Mr. Hawkins, thank you so much again for the explanation. Question about the proposed actions to mitigate the shortfall?
Yes.
I understand we're eliminating eight vacant teacher positions, so they're not currently filled. I just want to clarify that then adding the five math support teachers through Title I funding, we're really we're really short only three teacher positions? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, ma'am. We are, we already have five math teachers right now. They're in the operating fund. We're just shifting them to the federal grant to be paid by somebody else. That helps save money in the operating fund and moves those positions over. So we still, we had those five positions this year, we're going to have them next year. It's just a way of us helping balancing the operating fund. These other eight vacant teaching positions will be actual reductions in positions, not staff. But Mr. Gaffeler, Dr. Brent, other instructional team have, went out and surveyed, and they believe that these positions can be reduced without any loss of instructional ability at the schools.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me, I wasn't sure.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
One more question, though, I just thought of. Is there going to be any more changes before next month's meeting?
No, I hope not, no. I mean, we're not anticipating any. The governor and the general assembly have signed everything, and so we're not anticipating any changes at this point.
Very good, thank you very much. All right, next up on our agenda is board member comments. Are there any school board members that'd like to make a comment this evening? Mrs. Spall?
I just wanted to say that we had a great two-day meeting at VSBA headquarters last week, and I felt like we all got to know each other much better. We had chances to talk about things that really tend to have to do with guiding the ship that is Manassas City Public Schools. And when you're only able to speak to one other school board member at a time outside of a meeting, getting together like this is an important thing, and people should realize that it is difficult to really operate in the vacuum that happens when we can only speak to each other one at a time, two people at a time. So I wanted to say that I'm also excited to go to a conference on education, July 19th, and that I plan to be walking schools this week with some of my fellow board members, it looks like. I'm happy that we're putting in our budget the additional five percent increase to teachers for next year, and people are able to see and talk about that. I wasn't, until the budget came out, I wasn't really clear that we could tell teachers that that was happening, but I think that it makes us very competitive if they can look at a two-year plan of five percent each year. I'm happy to see concessions stand in our CIP, even if it's far out, that makes me happy. I'm super excited about our family liaisons, and I'm happy that we found the money for the bonuses to make sure that happens for teachers this year as well. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Anyone else? Mr. Hollingsworth?
Yes, I just want to echo Ms. Jill's comments. Last week's retreat was a positive experience for myself, got a chance to learn about my leadership traits and as well learn my peers, learn a little bit about them as well. Overall, I just wanted to appreciate the opportunity, let you know I appreciate the opportunity, and I appreciate the time to grow in this position. And so I thank the community for that time, and we will continue to grow and guide this ship as you previously said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. So, yeah, I'd like to echo both Mrs. Spall and Mr. Hollingsworth, but I'd also like to share with you a lot of the work that we did while we were gone for two days. We talked about implementing best practices, what makes a school successful, and there are five things that make a school successful. The first one is spending more time in school, basics, basic physics of education, you've got to be in the classroom. How schools use data to drive instruction. What do you do when you see bad pieces of data? Effective schools change their pace and change their focus on real data in real time, and that's what we're going to be working on. Human capital, evaluate our teachers and make sure they are, they have things and support they need to do their job successfully, which of course helps our students succeed as well. Tutoring, high dosage tutoring, we definitely have a plan for that. We've had, we have been doing that, we're going to continue to do that. Culture. So with the social emotional learning that's happening all over the country with the past couple of years just really impacting our students, we need to really, we need to make sure our students know that they're loved here, that they're safe here, but that we also have high expectations. And I believe that the plan that Mr. Gaffeler's pointed out to us or shared with us over our retreat, that's exactly what we're going to do. So it was great camaraderie amongst us, but it was also a lot of work and presentations being done, and I'm really looking forward to the next five years. That's it, Mrs.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I do want to also echo what a wonderful retreat it was to be able to work together, and I really, you know, I agree with Ms. Williams' comments, but to add on to that, I want to give, you know, just wonderful kudos and thank yous to all the people, the staff, the directors, who are doing all the work behind the scenes to get all of these practices in place for our students and our staff in our schools. So you guys do a great job and really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Ms. Rickball, do you have any comments tonight?
Yeah, I agree. I think everyone said it best before me. I was really grateful for the opportunity to go on the retreat last week, and I'm really excited to see how the work we did on that retreat will affect the work we do on the board. And, yeah, that's all I have for this evening. I just want to wish everyone a great weekend and a happy Independence Day.
Thank you, Mr. Rickball. Ms. Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. To piggyback on what Ms. Williams said, the things we talked about during the retreat, they really fell in line with the core police, excuse me, core beliefs of our five-year strategic plan. I wanted to just point out a few of those core beliefs. Student learning must include opportunities for critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity, citizenship, and literacy. A holistic approach is integral to student success and achievement. Partnering with all families, students, and community members is a valued and necessary component of a successful school community. You are, we are all valuable stakeholders when it comes to student success, and we value the input of everyone regardless of what role they play in our school division or our community. Every student and educator will have a safe and emotionally supportive learning and working environment, and all Manassas City Public Schools employees are educators. Those are the things that really stood out to me. They did echo, the core beliefs did echo what Ms. Williams said and what our executive directors are working on right now to bring about student success over the next five years. In addition, I wanted to share that Congress just passed the Keep Kids Fed Act, which continues free breakfast and lunch for the remainder of the summer, Monday through Thursday. If you go online to mcpsva.org, you will see the schedule for when and where lunch and breakfast are provided at our schools. They're provided Monday through Thursday. But the Keep Kids Fed Act is helping, will be helping to fund free breakfast and lunch this coming school year. We had a very robust discussion about it during our retreat, during the second day of our retreat, where we really discussed the pros and cons of whether or not to continue with free breakfast and lunch and how it was going to be funded. At that time, the Keep Kids Fed Act had not yet been passed, so that wasn't even part of our conversation, but I think we're all very happy that it has been passed because that will provide additional funds to reimburse us for the meals that we provide our students because fed students are happy students, fed students are healthy students, and fed students are students who are ready to learn and be successful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. And I'll just add for my comments tonight, I did get to do a visit last week over at Metz for the summer leap program. They were upcoming, they're rising seventh-grade students, and they were talking about civics, and so I got to talk about my role on the school board, being chair, and what the school board does, along with our superintendent that creates our governance team. And they asked a lot of good questions, and it was, I was there for an hour, so I was surprised that, they were very engaging and participated very well, and I look forward to another visit this week. Also, thanks to all my fellow school board members for your participation in our school board retreat. It was a great couple of days, and I'm excited for the next five years, too. Okay, moving along. We have a closed session this evening. May I have a motion, please?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Superintendent's Evaluation.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Spall, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Superintendent's Evaluation. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. We will be entering into closed session. Thank you for coming tonight.